I will ask that everyone mute yourself until I can figure out how to mute everyone. As you come in, just mute yourself. Alright, I like this crowd. Most of everyone is on time tonight. We only have maybe two or three people that have registered that aren't on, so that's great. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started with a brief intro because we do have a lot of newcomers to the Lady CPA tonight. So just a quick background on the organization. I founded the Lady CPA in 2017 when I was studying for the CPA exam. And I found that I just needed additional help, but I didn't want to help from people who didn't understand. Like I was a mom, a wife, four kids, working full-time in my firm. You know, trying to run the household, run the business, and I was just like completely all over the place. And I needed a support system of like-minded or people who were going through what I was going through. So like, you know, you go onto Facebook and you see the different study groups or whatever. But you know, what I was going through compared to, you know, maybe a new graduate who, you know, hadn't entered the field yet or didn't have all the responsibilities, it was different. And what I would find is that I would compare myself. So you know, you go to Facebook and someone's like, "Oh, I passed all four sections in six months with like 95." And I'm like, "How the heck did that happen? Like, how did they do that?" But that was their reality. That wasn't my reality. And I wanted to surround myself with, you know, either women who were working full-time and a mother and a wife and just trying to figure out how to navigate it all. And I couldn't find that anywhere, so I created it. So one of my, I tell people, I love Shark Tank. And Shark Tank is always says, "If you find an issue and you can't find a way to solve it, then you create the solution." So I created the solution. I created the Lady CPA Network because I am African-American. I wanted it to be an organization that supports minority women in accounting and finance. But like I tell people all the time, because we do have all ethnicities on this call tonight. And it's just an open organization supporting everyone to pass the CPA exam. But that's, that's just the nuts and bolts of it. Like I just needed an accountability partner. I needed a mentor. You know, like I didn't know anyone who was a CPA when I grew up. It's just something that kind of fell into my lap. And I really enjoyed it, but I didn't have anyone that I could reference and say, you know, "Hey, what do I do? Should I become licensed? You know, should I just stop at my master's degree? Because I happen to have already been in business over 10 years before I became certified. And my business was doing well. So I was one of the people that thought, okay, well, my business is successful. I've done corporate accounting. I've done internal audit. I'm now running my own firm for 10 years and I'm not licensed. Well, I'm doing great." But then I kept thinking, "Oh, hell, let me just do it." And my life post CPA has completely changed. So I have completely changed my tune and I encourage everyone to become licensed. It just makes a world of difference in the type of clients you attract, the type of jobs you will be offered. Because you don't even have to look for them. Not even looking for work. And I have recruiters all the time on LinkedIn asking me if I want a job. And I'm like, "I'm fine." So like, they will definitely come looking for you. So I definitely, you know, just encourage everyone in this process so that we all can become licensed together. And then my guest on tonight, and she actually interviewed me a few months back for her series that she was doing on the CPA exam and that is Miss Allah. So I'm gonna let her introduce herself to you guys.
Thank you so much, JG, for having me today. And it's my pleasure always to help and add value. And thanks for everything you are doing too. So yes, my name is Allah Abudayya. And I passed my CPA exam in the year 2011. And of course, I struggled until I passed it, like any other person who takes the exam. I failed the FAR and REG parts twice until I passed them. And I remember also, I took them in 2010, the first time. I took the four parts in 2010. I traveled overseas because, you know, I don't live in the States. I live in Palestine in the Middle East. So I traveled overseas and it was a great trip. Actually, I visited the United States. Thanks for the CPA exam for giving me this chance, of course. Yeah. And when I took my retakes in 2011, I took them in Dubai because there were international testing centers. They were opened, like newly opened there until I passed the exams. So it was a nice experience and at the same time, a tough experience. After that, I got my license from Colorado State Board of Accountancy. And also I registered in the AICPA membership, so I'm an AICPA member as well. And of course, I work as an auditor here. And now I have a full-time job as an audit manager. And after struggling with my CPA exam and all what I found, I got passionate about helping candidates also to pass this exam. So two years ago, I created a YouTube channel called My CPA Excellence. And I used to give like every week a video about everything about the CPA exam, including eligibility requirements, tips for studying, for passing, and more, and more stuff. And based on that, I started getting like people asking me questions and more stuff. So I started also to talk directly to people and to provide one-to-one coaching services to candidates to help them in their planning, in motivating them, in giving them information and tips about the exam, how to be ready, how to be prepared, how to study, also study methods. So yeah, yeah. And also I'm active on social media, on Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook. I have also a private Facebook group. So anyone can also contact me on my social media, reach out on my social media if anyone has any question. And so that's like a brief view about me. Of course, I am a mother of three also. And as I said, I have a full-time job as an audit manager and also help candidates pass the exam. So that's like a brief overview about me. Yeah.
And then one good thing I like, guys, about her YouTube channel is like she literally has gone through every state's requirement. So like if you want to know the requirements in Georgia or the requirements in Indiana, like you can go through her videos and find like whatever state you're interested in. And she like has researched it and she has it all out. So like a lot of times we say, "Okay, well," because you don't, it's a real misconception because people don't understand that you can test anywhere. Like I lived in Georgia when I first started, but I didn't meet the Georgia requirements to sit for the CPA exam. And I refused to go back and get additional hours. I was just like, "This is crazy." Because by the time I got ready to study, I had already had a bachelor's degree, even though my undergraduate degree was not in accounting. And that's why some states I didn't qualify, but I had already had a master's degree and had already finished all of my core classes towards my doctorate. And I'm like, "There is no way I'm going back to take additional classes. Like you people are crazy." So what I did was research the states that I met the requirement for, and I went to that state. So I'm licensed in Indiana. And I lived in Georgia and I moved to Florida all through the whole testing process because you can test anywhere, as long as the prometric, like she said. She was in Dubai at the testing centers there. So you can go to any testing center and you can register to be licensed in any state, just you qualify. And Indiana, they take candidates with master's degrees and they look at your transcripts and they say, "Hey, welcome, come on." Whereas some other states was like, "Oh, no, you gotta go get 15 more credit hours. Oh, no, you gotta do this." And they didn't. So I always say, you know, a lot of people will start to look at the requirements and feel like they don't meet the requirements for their state. And then they go trying to run and take additional courses to meet the requirement. The test itself is already expensive. You don't need to go waste that money trying to take additional courses that if you can go to another state and qualify for that state, then you don't have to do that. And then you can get a reciprocal license if once you get past, you know, pass everything. And some, some states are easier than others because like I said, I'm in Florida now and I just applied for my reciprocal license from Florida. And they still want me to take 15 more credit hours. And I said, "Yeah, no, I'm not doing that." And I don't have to be licensed in Florida. It was just something I was gonna do since I'm here. But you know, you don't have to. So I definitely encourage you to research that because I don't want anyone to think that they're testing now, but they don't qualify for the state they live and then they gotta go take additional classes. Don't do that. Go find a state. Because I can believe me, there are some states, I'm sure if you got to this point, then there is a state out there that you already qualified and you don't have to go do that. You know, some states require two years of work experience. Some require, you know, maybe only a year. Some do it by the hours, a thousand hours or you know, whatever. So I definitely say research each state and then go from there. So what we're gonna do is do an overview like we normally do, and I'm gonna let Allah lead that. She has a PowerPoint that she's gonna show you. So the first part of these sessions is always just dealing with background, history-type stuff, you know, an overview. After that, we'll go into specific questions. We do have a couple of people that have submitted actual, you know, questions that they kind of wanted us to look at. So we'll go over that in the second half. So I will turn it over and I think you should have the ability to share your screen.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so let's start. So about me, I already gave a brief overview about myself, so I'm not gonna repeat that again. Let's start with the FAR exam now. So the FAR part of the exam is usually considered the most difficult part of the exam. And that's because of, the first thing, it's the most comprehensive and condensed part. So anyone who studies FAR will notice that it almost includes every subject we took in the university, excluding auditing and taxation. So it includes intermediate accounting, basic accounting, advanced accounting. Managerial, managerial and cost are in business most, but mostly here you're gonna find managerial, advanced financial accounting, governmental, and accounting theory as well. So it's a very condensed part. That's why it's a big and tough bit for candidates. The second reason is that the FAR section has the lowest pass rates for any CPA exam. So if you look here at the table, we're gonna find, this table is for 2020, and I got it from the AICPA.org. So for quarter one and two and three, we're gonna find that the average, the cumulative passing rates for FAR is 53.3% which is the lowest pass rate. And then comes the audit and then the REG and then the BEC. So that's, that shows that it is a really tough part and candidates to have the lowest pass rates in this part. Now concerning the FAR exam content, now the FAR tests the knowledge of all financial accounting standards and reporting frameworks for businesses, non-for-profit, in-state and local governments. According to the, to the blueprints, the FAR content is as follows. So I advise anyone who wants to study for any section of the CPA exam, always. You guys, look at the blueprints. You can go to AICPA.org and search for the blueprints. And then you can print the updated blueprints for any section you want. Over there, you're gonna find the content allocation, the skills tested for any section, the detailed content that is tested and what skills levels cover each content. So here for FAR, when I went to the blueprints, exactly the updated blueprints say that the conceptual framework, standard setting and financial reporting form from 25 to 35% of the total FAR weight. And the second thing is the financial statements accounts, which form from 30 to 40%. And then select transactions, which form from 20 to 30%. And the state and local governments, which form 5 to 15%. I wanna see here a small note that anyone who sees the, this weight allocation will conclude that the state and governmental accounting is, is not heavily tested on the exam. So a lot of people, they ignore it. They don't take care of this topic. And actually, on the reality, it is heavily tested in the exam. So you're gonna face a lot of multiple choice questions on governmental and state accounting. So I advise anyone not to underestimate this topic and to give it your enough time to study it. Because you're gonna find a lot of questions on this topic. Especially that a lot of candidates, they don't take governmental accounting in the university, including myself. I never took this topic in the university, so it was a bit new for me when I studied for the exam. So that's why I advise you all guys to give it enough time and study it well. Skill levels tested by FAR. The AICPA defines four skill levels that you must have, you must know for any part of the exam. Here are the four skill levels that you must, you must know for the exam. The first skill level, which is the lowest skill level, is the remembering and understanding, which is usually tested in the multiple choice questions. So they just test your remembering and remembering and understanding of any concept you learned. Usually it's, in the FAR exam, it's from 10 to 20% its weight. These questions are weight. The second higher one is the application. So from what you learned, from what you understood, you should apply the concepts you learned. These form from 50 to 60% of the FAR exam. And you're gonna find application questions in the multiple choice questions and in task-based simulations. So for example, when you learn about the depreciation methods, you should be able to apply the methods you learned and compute numbers. So you're gonna find questions on these application questions in multiple choice questions in task-based simulations. The third skill level that is tested in this CPA exam, and the higher one is the analysis. So here you're gonna try also not only to apply what you learned, but you're gonna have to think a bit and analyze the facts you have and tie things together. So these questions are usually found in the task-based simulations and they form from 25 to 35% of the FAR exam. Now, the highest level skill is the evaluation, which is not tested at all in the FAR exam. It's usually in the audit exam. The evaluation will test your ability to reach out to conclusions from the facts you have, make some judgments and reach out to conclusions. So these are the four skill levels that are tested. Of course, these are all found also in the blueprints. You can find the details of them in the blueprints. And what I love too about the blueprints is that they give you these skills for the detailed content. So each content, each topic in the exam, which skills are covered in this topic. Now we're gonna talk about the FAR exam structure and score allocation. Of course, you have four hours to complete the FAR exam. And plus, there are 30 additional hour, 30 minutes, I mean, for, to take a break. There's a 15-minute break and you're gonna have introductory screens and a survey at the end of the exam. So here's how the exam goes. The first five minutes, when you enter, when you enter into the exam, you're gonna have a welcome and launch code. You're gonna put that code on the NTS in the computer in order to launch the exam. The second five minutes, so this is the first five minutes, the second five minutes, you're gonna read the confidentiality section and I agree with this confidentiality. And then after that, you're gonna go into the exam. I just wanna say here an important note, when it comes to the introductory screens, make sure we're not to spend too much time on those. Like maximum, you have 10 minutes to complete them and begin the exam. Otherwise, I heard from a lot of candidates who like spent more time on these screens that the exam shuts down if you like spend too much time on them. So make sure like to give them the exact time, like not to exceed the five minutes for each screen. Okay? Now after that, you're gonna go into the exam. The exam time is four and 15, four hours, 15 minutes. The 15 minutes, of course, are for the break. So you're gonna have five testlets. The first two testlets are multiple choice question testlets. Between each testlet, you're gonna have optional breaks. And this break, you know, the time runs in these optional breaks. So between the first and second testlet, there's an optional break. And the second and third one, there's an optional break. The first two testlets, as I said, are multiple choice questions. Then the last three are task-based simulations. Now, the standardized break comes after the third testlet. I advise you all guys to take the standardized break. It's, that, that time stops here, so you have 15 minutes to take this break. You can go drink something, take some, like relax a bit, maybe you need the bathroom or something. So it's a good thing to take this break. I don't advise you guys to take the optional break because, you know, the time runs during this time, during this break, unless you, there's something urgent. So that's why I advise you also before the exam, like don't drink a lot of coffee or drink a lot of water because you're gonna have to go a lot of the bathroom and that's not good for the exam. Like just be reasonable and take, don't like over, overdo things. Now, after you come back from the break, after the third testlet, you're gonna have the last two testlets, which are task-based simulations. And for the BEC section, only there's a written communication, so for the FAR, no written communication. And after you finish the exam, you have a five-minute survey. So the AICPA will ask you to fill a survey and submit it to them. Now, that, also, we're gonna talk about exactly the number of questions. So the first two testlets, you're gonna get 33 multiple choice questions in each testlet. And then the third testlet, you're gonna get two task-based simulations. And then the break and then the last two testlets, you're gonna have three task-based simulations in each. So as I said, the total multiple choice questions, you're gonna get 66 multiple choice questions. 54 of them will count and 12 will be pretests. So the pretest questions are questions that AICPA put them in the exam. They don't count, they do not count toward your score. They usually put these questions to test them and see how candidates do in them in order to determine if they want to put them in the future as counted questions or not. Of course, you never know the pretest questions, so always take care of all the questions and treat them as if all of them will count. Now, the multiple choice questions form 50% of the exam score. Task-based simulations form 50% also of the score. Also, the task-based simulations, you're gonna get eight task-based simulations. Expect to receive one or two research questions within these simulations. So you're gonna get like a research, they're gonna ask you to research for something in accounting standards or something in these questions. And of course, out of the eight task-based simulations, seven of them will count. And there's also one that is a pretest task-based simulation, so it will not count. And as I said, you never know which one is the pretest, so always take care of everything. And now, unlike the multiple choice questions, you can get partial credit on most task-based simulations. So if you get a multiple choice question wrong, it will not count at all. But when it comes to task-based simulations, if you, for example, fill part of it correctly and maybe left something empty in it or did wrong in the, in some other answers, you will get a partial credit for your correct answer. So this is a great opportunity for you all guys to, you know, get some scores. At least you can answer what you know. And if you don't know other things, you can guess them or if there's no time, you can leave some stuff. But at least do what you can do. So my tip for task-based simulations always is never skip an entire task-based simulation. Try to answer what you can, what you can, then not solving anything. So answer what, what you can do and put what you can answer. You may get partial credit for your correct answers, but don't leave it the whole empty. Okay? So now I'm gonna give you some tips for the FAR. So the first thing, what I, everyone to do is concerning FAR, so take the FAR always the first part of the exam, always. Because the FAR is the most biggest and condensed part. Finishing it first will make you feel better and will give you a plenty of time for the other parts because as you know, there's an 18-month rule. So once you pass a part of the exam, you have 18 months to pass the remaining three parts. So if you take this part, finish it and remove it from your way, it will save a lot of time for you for the other parts and you will not get stuck in time. That's the first reason. Second reason is, you know, as I said, FAR, FAR content is like it includes a lot of stuff that we learned in the university. So I advise anyone who finishes university to start immediately with the FAR exam. You're gonna find it much more easier because the information is still fresh in your mind, the financial accounting concepts, financial statements, intermediate, advanced. All those concepts are still fresh in your mind, so you're not, you will not face difficulty like someone who, you know, leaves it till the end or leaves it after a while from the university. So that's a great thing to do. And the third reason why I always advise you guys to start with the FAR part is that it intersects with all other three parts. So in order to study audits and to audit financial statements, you should already know the financial statement concepts, how to make adjusting entries and more details about how to account for financial statements, right? And also in the taxation, you're gonna find some FAR concepts. And in the business also, you may, like the present value concepts and those stuff, you're gonna find them in the business and they are also covered in the FAR part. So it's very important always to, like my advice for anyone is to start with the FAR part of the exam. It will help you in the other parts as well. The second tip I have concerning FAR is always, guys, before you start, make a sharp study plan and most importantly, stick to this plan. So I don't advise you to rush, never rush any part of the exam. Always give it the time. And at the same time, don't give it too much. Like I hear candidates maybe they spend six months or a year maybe studying for a part. That's too much, of course. Because the CPA exam is a game of memory. So what, what differentiates a person from another is how you can retain your memory and remember the information. That's why, don't like spread it a lot. Try to, to study in a reasonable time in order to, first of all, understand the concepts better. And second, remember what you understood. That's why I usually advise like FAR, you can give it from 12 to 14 weeks. I think that this, that's enough for FAR. And when you start studying, study consistently and stick to your plan. If you are someone who are, who is working full-time, maybe like from 24 to 28 hours a week is enough. And for someone who works, who doesn't work or who studies for full-time, you can, guys, study like 35 hours a week. So very, it's very important to make a plan and stick to this plan and, and study consistently. Don't like sleep this week and then next week, stop studying. No, you should keep on studying and try to finish the book, finish the material within the planned time in order to remember the information. Because if you start, if you stop studying, you're gonna start forgetting the information again. The third tip I have for FAR is always while studying FAR, try always to do journal entries, the T-schedule, the T-accounts, the schedules. This will help you a lot to understand FAR because all the FAR concepts depends on journal entries and the T-accounts and the schedules. And actually, they simplify stuff a lot. So I remember the T-accounts. I used to, to do them a lot, especially when it comes to accounts receivable and the movements on the accounts, the beginning balance, the movements, the end balance. So the T-accounts used to help me a lot to understand them and simplify them. And also the journal entries, it's very important to know how to do them, the debits and credits and the schedules, how to do an income statement, cash flow and those stuff. And also the schedule, the bond schedule, for example, the interest schedule. Okay, you will, you'll not be asked to complete these maybe schedules or T-accounts on the exam, but it's good for you to know them and to, in order to be able to answer the questions that come on the exam, you may need to do some T-accounts or schedules or something. This will help you a lot to easily solve the question and get the correct answer. The next tip I have here is, as always, I advise you all guys to practice, practice, practice. So you don't only want to watch lectures and read the text. Always give most of your time on practicing. So, okay, at the first, okay, watch the lectures, take some notes, read the text. And then spend most of your time on practicing questions, especially multiple choice questions at the beginning. Task-based simulations, you can leave them at the end, maybe like the last, maybe after you start studying after like four or five weeks, you can start practicing task-based simulations. But at the beginning, you wanna focus on multiple choice questions. Give 40% of your time on learning concepts and lectures and notes and 60% should go to practicing. It's very important to practice in order to apply what you learned. And through practicing, you're going to know when it's the best time to move from a question to another, when it's the best time to guess the answer and where you need to spend most of your time in studying and answering questions. Another tip I have for FAR here is to, for FAR is to have a time management for FAR is to have a time management strategy. It's very, very important, the time management strategy. Now, FAR specifically, the FAR part of the exam, the time is very, very limited. Because the FAR, what, what differentiates it from the other parts is that it has a lot of computations. So you're gonna maybe be asked a question on to compute, for example, bonds or compute any other, in the consolidations, for example. So that's why candidates take much time in questions in the FAR and they get stuck in time. So for me, for example, I'm gonna talk from my personal experience. When I took my FAR exam the first time, I ended up, the exam stopped, the exam ended without me being, without me solving the last two task-based simulations. So I left the, the whole two task-based simulations empty because I got out of time. So it's very important to have a tough, a sharp time management strategy and stick to this strategy. What I advise here when it comes to the time management strategy is you must guys try to finish the first three testlets by the end of the first two hours. So before you go into the break, the break, the, the standardized break comes after the first two hours of the exam, which is after the third testlet. You should be done with the first, with the first three testlets, okay? So by the end of the two hours, try to finish the first three testlets. And then the remaining two hours will be on the remaining two testlets, which are the task-based simulation testlets. So testlet number one should take forty-five minutes from you. The second testlet, forty-five minutes, which are multiple choice question testlets. The third testlet, thirty minutes. So this gives you like two hours for the first three testlets. And then testlet number four and five, you're gonna give them one hour each. Usually the multiple choice questions, you're gonna spend like, you must manage your time to spend like from a minute to a minute and a half for each multiple choice question. It depends. Some multiple choice questions, as I mentioned, the ones that, that test you're remembering, you're remembering and understanding, you can solve them in seconds. Like when they ask you something about that conceptual framework or, or anything like that's direct, depends on memorization. So you can read it and answering, and answer it immediately. It takes you like seconds to answer. Other multiple choice questions will need more time. You're gonna have to compute some numbers, do some calculations. So it may take you, for example, minutes and, and a half or even minutes and a bit more. So try always to manage your time properly and speed up in multiple choice questions. Don't spend too much time on, on a question, even if you don't know it or something. Just put your best guess and move on in order to save time for other questions. Now, the task-based simulations, you're gonna have more than one kind of task-based simulations. There are simple ones, which you can do them in like fifteen to twenty minutes. And there are a bit more complex ones that may need like twenty-five minutes and sometimes even thirty minutes. So also try to, like the task-based simulations, give them like this, if, if, if it's something like simple and you can answer it, give it not more than twenty minutes and the other ones, not more than thirty minutes. And through this strategy, if you like stick to this time management strategy and try to speed up also, always keep your eye on the time, you're gonna finish on time. Okay, as I mentioned before, don't ignore governmental and non-for-profit accounting and expect to receive plenty of questions on those topics. Like I hear a lot of candidates, they say that they get a lot of multiple choice questions on them. So study them, give them enough time and don't ignore them. Another tip for FAR is always like when you read the questions and you, you want to answer any question, always determine and understand where in the general accounting cycle your question lies. Because FAR questions come from the financial statements and the general accounting cycle. So determining where you are in the cycle allows you to know what the next steps are exactly. If at any point you're stuck in any question or you don't understand anything in a question, go back exactly to the general accounting cycle and ask yourself, what, which cycle are they asking about? What are you working on? Where does it fit in the accounting cycle? And then you can know exactly what to do next. So understanding the accounting cycle gives you the ability to know exactly the journal entries, the impact on the balance sheet, income statement, cash flows, the disclosures, any exceptions. So it's very important to tie anything you are answering with the accounting cycle from the ledger to the trial balance, the financial statements and the liabilities, assets and equity and those stuff. Now, concerning the, the must-know topics for FAR, like it's very important to know, for, for number one, study the accounting changes and error corrections. You must learn the two accounting approaches to deal with these changes or errors. We have the prospective application and the retrospective application. Now, the prospective application, it means that you must apply this change going forward. Usually, the prospective application is used with the changes in estimates. So for example, if you get a question on the exam asking you about a change in the estimate of the useful life or depreciation method of a plant, property or equipment, you should immediately know that this is a prospective application. The other approach is the retrospective application, which is going back in time. So you apply the change retrospectively. This is usually used in the change in accounting principles. So for example, in the exam, if you get a question from changing to GAAP principle to another like LIFO or FIFO or whatever, or for correction of errors, you should immediately know that correction of errors and
I know he was wearing glasses.
And change in accounting principles should be applied retrospectively. The second must-know topic for FAR is the total comprehensive income. So the idea behind total comprehensive income is to show a total picture of all operating income gains and losses. As you all know, net income plus other comprehensive income will give you the comprehensive income. Now, the other comprehensive income items you must know are the unrealized gains or losses on securities, unrecognized gains or losses from pension calls, foreign currency translation adjustments, unrealized gains or losses from certain derivative transactions. So you must know the other comprehensive items and expect to receive multiple choice questions on those two. The third must-know topic is that difference between the basic earning per share and diluted earning per share. Expect to receive a task-based simulation or a multiple choice questions on this topic. So you must know the formulas for each one. So the basic earning per share, usually it's the net income divided by the weighted average of shares outstanding. I have here a note, if the problem includes a stock dividend or stock splits at some point during the year, these are treated as being outstanding the whole year. So the exam will try to trick you here and give you, for example, that there's a stock dividend or stock splits during some point of the year. But here, you should know that it should be treated as being outstanding for the whole year. So the weighting doesn't apply. The second formula for the basic diluted earning per share is, now the basic diluted earning per share is the same as the basic, but you should deduct the preferred stocks. So, so you take the net income minus preferred stocks divided by the weighted average of shares of outstanding plus the conversion of any in-money options warrants and other dilutive securities. So the idea behind the diluted earning per share is that at any given time, a company might have millions of stock options or convertible bonds that would significantly impact that earning per share if all of those were, were outstanding. The, the fourth topic is the bonds. It's very important to know when the bond is sold on a premium or a discount, you're gonna be given two rates in any question in the exam. There's a stated market rate and there's, there's a stated rate and there's a market rate. If the stated rate is more than the market rate, then the bond is sold at a premium. On the other hand, if the stated rate is less than the market rate, then the bond is sold at a discount. You should also learn when it comes to bonds, you should learn when the interest expense is higher than cash paid to bondholders, which is usually when a bond is sold at a discount and vice versa as well. So when the interest is less than the cash paid to bondholders, that is when that bond is sold at a premium. The third thing you must know about bonds is how to compute some bond stuff and make journal entries for these things, for the bond proceeds. Okay, so you must know how to compute bond proceeds using the present value table and how to make the journal entry for the bond proceeds. You should also know how to compute the semi-annual interest payments for bonds and how to also make the journal entries for them. And you must also know how to compute the carrying amount of the bond at year end. The fifth topic you must for FAR is how to convert from cash basis to accrual basis. The exam will give you cash paid and you'll have to come up with the expenses incurred. So when it comes to expenses, you're gonna have to come up with the accurate liabilities or the expenses incurred. Now, there are a lot of formulas, a lot of stuff. I also advise you before you memorize any formula or never memorize stuff, try always to simplify the concepts, understand them, use T accounts because it will help you a lot here. And based, based on your understanding and the logic, you can also then make an equation and you, but you're gonna know the logic behind the equation, not only like memorize it for the purpose of memorizing. So usually, when, when we want to convert from cash to accrual when it comes to expenses, we're gonna take all the cash paid during the year, start with the cash paid plus accrued liabilities, which is, which means the incurred, the expenses incurred this year but not paid as of year end, and then deduct from it the expenses incurred last year and pay this year. Because not everything paid this year should be incurred this year. So once we add that cash paid plus the accrued expenses minus expenses incurred last year, we're gonna come up with the expenses incurred this year based on the accrual basis of accounting. The other thing the exam will ask you also, it's not only about expenses, the exam also will ask you about the revenue. So how to convert from cash revenue to accrual, accrual revenue. So the exam will give you cash received and you'll have to come up with the recognized revenue in accordance with the accrual basis of the accounting. So you're gonna begin with the cash collected, add to it the change in account receivable based on the beginning account receivable minus ending and then the change in any unearned revenue or deferred revenue, we call it. And then you're gonna come up with the revenue recognized during the year based on the accrual basis. It's very important, as I said, to understand these concepts properly. Use the T accounts if you wanna come up with any change in account receivable, the ending balance of account receivable or deferred revenue, it will help you a lot to understand these concepts. Other must-know topics for FAR, which you will find them in the multiple choice questions and task-based simulations, includes the goodwill impairment rules, the new rules for goodwill impairment, which is, I think it's simple rule, you just need to compare between the fair value and the carrying value at the level of the individual reporting unit and recognize any improvements if the fair value was, was less than the carrying value. The second thing you must know is the two methods of recording treasury stocks, which is the cost method and the par value method. Retirement of treasury stock is also a frequent asked question on the exam. The third thing is the intercompany eliminations for consolidated financial statements. It's very important to study consolidations. Expect to receive a task-based simulation on consolidations. I heard from a lot of candidates that they get a lot of task-based simulations on consolidations. What are the eliminating, eliminating entries you must make when, when you want to combine the financial statements, consolidate them for, for companies? Also learn the leases. You must understand the criteria for a finance lease and how the right of use of asset and lease liability are impacted when there is an immediate payment and in which you and a first payment one year from lease inception. Know the difference also between an operating and finance lease for both the LSE and the lesser. The next topic is the direct and indirect methods to prepare cash flows. You must know both methods. You must know the, the sections of the cash flow statements, the net cash flow from operating activities, from investing activities and from financing activities. And as I said, the governmental funds and non-for-profit, it's very important to learn the difference between the fund-level financial reporting and government-wide financial reporting, especially with regards to assets and liabilities. Know when the term expenditure is used and when the term expense is used. The next topic is to learn the difference between remeasurement and translation methods of converting financial statements into a foreign currency. Other topics also include pensions, which are a very challenging topic for CPA exam candidates, actually including myself. So when I studied for the CPA exam, actually the pensions, I faced difficulties in understanding this topic. It was a bit mixing, I don't know why confusing. So learn how to calculate the total income statement impact and the asset and liability to be, to be reported on the balance sheet for pensions. Also learn, study that non-monetary exchange, which are tested in the FAR and you, you need to know how to handle the gains or losses. Finally comes the deferred taxes. You must learn the difference between a deferred tax asset and a deferred tax liability and how and when it reverses. Now, concerning my multiple choice question tips, always read the call of the question first. You're gonna find in the exam that they give you maybe a long multiple choice question, maybe four or five sentences. And it includes a lot of distracting information. They try to distract you, they try to, to trick you, right? So it's very important here, it starts with the, the last sentence, what the question is asking about exactly. And then you're gonna know immediately, once you read the last question, you're gonna know what the question is asking about and in your mind quickly, you're gonna know the, the things you need to answer the question. And then go back, read the question and you're gonna use the information you need only because not everything they give you, you may need. The second tip is never leave anything blank. And when it comes to multiple choice questions, if, even if you don't know, you don't have any idea about the question, put your best guess and move on. You never know, maybe you're gonna get a point for this guess. The third tip for multiple choice question is pay attention always to words like except for, most, most, most least likely, most likely, and those words, which change the whole meaning of the sentence. The fourth tip is always practice, practice, practice. Always like practice makes you perfect. So always practice. Use your CPA review course to practice, practice multiple choice questions. I advise you guys to like practice thirty, like do like study tests of thirty multiple choice questions each in order to get used to the exam structure. Because as I said in the exam, you're gonna get like testlets of thirty-three multiple choice questions. So try to do like the same amount of multiple choice questions while practicing. And always keep your eye on the time while practicing as well. Try to, you know, how, to apply the time management skills. And the, the fifth tip when it comes to multiple choice questions is understand not only what the correct answer is, but also why the other answers were incorrect. So if you answer a question incorrectly, go back, read the explanation of the question, why the other answers were incorrect. Like this will give you four learning opportunities, not one learning opportunity because you're gonna learn the, why the other answers were incorrect. You're gonna get a new information and you're gonna understand a new, you're gonna better understand your, the information and getting the concepts better, right? So by reading the descriptions that go along with the incorrect answers, you can better understand where you went wrong. So why practicing multiple choice questions is a must? Because the first thing, it makes you think about all areas of a topic on the exam. Even if the exam is asking you about like understanding and learning, you can use critical thinking and analytical thinking and ask yourself how this simple question turns into an application question? How could this topic show on a task-based simulation? So you, you start like, your brain starts moving, your brain starts thinking about how this question can be asked in different ways in the exam. And this will help you a lot to solve questions on the exam. The second reason why you must practice always multiple choice questions is to practice your topic switching abilities. Like some candidates, they like, they can't solve questions for different topics together. They like, they get used only to solving question on a certain topic only. So all those guys, I advise you here to, while also studying, after you finish studying, for example, a module and go to the next module, after that, you can do cumulative questions on everything you studied in order to get used to the topic switching, like switching from a topic to another and how to think quickly. It is a must to be able to quickly move from a topic to another when sitting for the exam. Practice cumulative multiple choice questions on different topics you learned and watch your time. The last reason why you must practice multiple choice questions is to get used to the exam mode. So by practicing multiple choice question, you can become physically and mentally prepared for the long and tough exam. Always before the exam, the week before the exam. Do also mock exams. I advise you to do two mock exams or three mock exams. Put yourself in the exam mood. This will help you a lot be ready for the exam. And with this COVID, COVID situations, practice with a mask. This will help you a lot to, to be ready for the exam because putting the mask is not easy, I know. But you should practice and get used to it in order not to find it difficult during the exam. And that was my part for today and like what I wanted to share with you guys today. Hope this helped.
That was awesome. Like that, and a lot of that information I had actually forgotten about. And I'm over here just shaking my head because like literally everything literally everything she said is absolutely spot on. Like you have to pay attention to all of that, like every single, and a lot of people will say, well, you know, what's gonna be tested? Everything is tested. Yeah. There is, there is no shortcut. Like there's no, okay, well, I can focus on leases or focus on bonds. Everything is tested and you don't know what test you'll get. And even once you take it once and if you have to go back for a retake, don't expect the retake to be anything like the first time. Because I took a couple of them three, four times and every single time I had a completely different test. So you know, it's, it's no like trickery or anything. You, you just have to really know a little bit about everything. So you know, it may not be expert knowledge and you don't, may not get every single question right. You need a seventy five. And what the seventy five is, it's not a seventy five percent correct. Because a lot of people think that's what the seventy five is. The seventy five means you know about seventy five percent of the material not to mess up somebody's stuff. Like that's literally what it is. It's like, you know, you have enough knowledge that, you know, seventy five percent knowledge of everything. And so it's not, okay, well, this question is worth one point. This question is worth two points. Like that's not how it's graded. So that's why I say it's always best to just know as much as you can about every topic, especially like man, I was over here just shaking my head because consolidations tore me up every time. And I think I saw it every time I tested FAR. I think I took FAR, I wanna say three times. And the consolidations, government, nonprofits, it's all there. And you may not get a ton, but you will get one or two on everything. So definitely that and the time management. I mean, I was just over here writing notes too because I had an issue with time management. I tell people a lot, take the mock exam. Every study course has a mock exam. And it helps you get your timing together. Because under pressure, you don't know how you'll react. Like some people have text anxiety and you just start fumbling. Like with me, I had a thing where I would read the multiple choice question probably three times. And that was just wasting too much time. And then I would go back and second guess myself like, should I? Okay, is that right? And I'm reading it again. And it was just, so you hear people run out of time all the time and that's real. You will run out of time. And then the same thing with the T accounts and journal entries. I can't tell you enough yet. You will definitely, and I can say this without a shadow of a doubt, you will definitely get a simulation with, with journal entries. Because you have to know how to book the journal entry. So practice, practice, practice journal entries and knowing you know, which account to book items to and all of that. I mean, I'm literally like just writing those down because everything was like so spot on. Definitely take him FAR before audit, even if you have already maybe taken RED or REG or BEC. The order, if you can't start with FAR, is definitely take FAR before audit. Because you have to be able to read the financial statements in order to audit them. So if you haven't taken FAR, and I didn't know that, like no one told me that. So I actually took audit first. The only reason it wasn't as difficult is because I had audit experience. But even so, I would have passed audit probably the first time had I taken FAR first. Because I knew the audit process, but my undergraduate degree is not in accounting. So the T accounts and journal entries, you know, I do them every day, but that doesn't mean you know anything when it comes to taking FAR. So like do not underestimate and I definitely say if you possibly can take FAR, definitely before audit. And you will have a much easier time with audit. Um, what else are in my notes? And then one thing, I, I know we had a couple of questions. I'm gonna go through these right quick in the chat. The session is being recorded. So if you would like a recording of it, just email admin at the lady CPA network dot com and we'll send you a link to the recording. I think we answered everything else. Her YouTube channel is My CPA Excellence. And this is before we get into, you know, some live questions. Um, I think we answered those. Um, for my mom, the one that says, uh, studying tips for a mom, you know, that was a little different because you have to you have to either find a support system within your house, whether it be your husband, a grandparent or someone that you can say, you know, can you watch the kids for a couple of hours? What I did is got noise cancelling headsets. And put on white noise in my ear so that I couldn't hear anything around me and just tunnel vision because sometimes, you know, it's not, you're not able to leave the house. You know, so you, you have to kind of study with everything going on around you. So I just bought head, a noise cancelling headset, turned on white noise, tunnel vision and just if you're bleeding, then interrupt me. If you're not bleeding, then you're okay. Because as a mom, you know, sometimes we just have to do it. If there was a weekend where I could get, you know, my mom or my dad or somebody to watch the kids, then I did that. If you can leave the house as a mom, go to Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Panera, somewhere, you know, with COVID, it might be a little more difficult, but the library, whatever you can do to get away for a few hours and as a mom maximize the weekends. So if you don't have a lot of time to study during the week, then definitely maximize your weekend time. So you can, you know, send the kids off on a playdate, you know, with, with a friend or family or something so that you can get your time in. But time, it, it looked like she said, time is of the essence and do not wait too long. Because if you stretch one subject out for six months, it, it's just too much information and you'll start to forget. So you definitely wanna be mindful of your time and try to do, you don't wanna rush it, but you don't wanna take too much time either. Because then again, it's just, it's a wealth of information. You don't know what you're gonna be tested on. So you have to know pretty much all of it. And know it enough to pass the exam. A seventy five was my friend. And I was, I'm, I'm just, cuz my, my seventy five and a ninety four were still CPAs. It, it does not matter. So you do what you can and what best is your schedule as long as we can get you to pass this test. So we had a couple of questions that people submitted. I'm going to my other screen over here. Um, just general questions. And then if, if anyone has any other general questions too, you can unmute yourself before we get into um, some multiple choice questions. And now on one of here, we did have someone that wrote in when they registered, does the CPA exam have questions related to ACS codes? For example, I mean ASC codes, like ASC eight twenty five and all of that. You won't get a question where you have to know what the code is. Like you, so they're not gonna say, hey, what is ASC eight twenty five is or what, what's the code for? You know, I say audit stuff, guys, cuz that's my background. So you're not gonna get something that says, you know, what's the, the ASC code for compilations or reviews? Like you don't get that type of stuff. Now what you may get is something in a research question where you have to go through and maybe find a standard or a code or something like that, but you won't be asked to recall any ASC codes. Uh, we had another question says, if you can provide a list of topics that might be on the exam and how we can practice them. Which she did an excellent job at, like every single, I expect everyone on this call to be emailing me for a link of this webinar because she literally broke down every single thing and they are all on there. Like don't skip, they are all on there. Um, is that my dog? No, um, bonds, time value, money, leases, pensions, again, all of that she covered. I struggled with bonds. Like I just couldn't get the present value bond thing. I, I just couldn't get it. I struggled with it. So there will be some areas that you can read the book, you can look at the lecture and it just for whatever reason does not click. For me, it was bonds and it was tax, like the direct, the indirect and, 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 oh, it was just so much. I always say supplement. If you get stuck on something and you, you've read your book, you've looked at the lectures for your program, go to YouTube. Go to a friend, go to anyone you can and just have someone to kind of explain it to you. Usually it's something we're missing. And as soon as you can connect the dots and it clicks, once it clicks, you have it. And that's some stuff you just don't forget. Like once it clicks and you find a method to figure it out, then you'll be fine. So you just have to get to that point and don't be afraid to reach out to other people and ask. Whether it's YouTube, whether it's using our form, whether it's going to, you know, Allah's, um, uh, YouTube page. And you know, Google it and see if she already has something out there about it or send her a message on LinkedIn or something and just say, you know, ladies, I'm struggling with this one particular thing. It just does not click for me. We're all here to support everyone and that's, that's literally what we're here to do. We're going to, cuz one really good thing in these last thirty minutes, we're gonna want some questions because one really important she said, thing she mentioned was the topic switching and read the call of the question. And the call of the question is what is it asking? Because the CPA exam will throw fluff is what I call it. That has nothing to do with nothing. And you'll be stuck trying to figure out what they're asking you and, and it has nothing to do with the question. You don't even need to look at it. And then definitely topic switching because when you study, especially with surgeon and I use surgeon, I'm gonna share my screen. With surgeon, you can, um, study like a particular subject, but you'll get stuck. So like, let's say you're doing, you know, um, select transactions and you're used to running the questions just for this topic. Well, you, you'll memorize them. That's just nature. Like you, you'll be used to seeing the same question over and over and over. And guys, this stuff is super old, but the software is recent. So like all of the stuff out here is old cuz it's been two years or so. But, um, like if you're doing inventory and you're only doing questions in inventory over and over and over, you need to switch it up. So pull, and I don't know, everyone's software is different, but I believe everyone has the ability to just pull where to pull all questions. So that you'll get used to seeing them out of order, different topics coming in. And that's a good way to test your knowledge cuz it took me probably two tests in before I realized that I had memorized a lot of stuff. And when I got to the test and it looked different because it wasn't written the way surgeon had it written, it was written different, then I didn't really know it. And I'm like, well, God, I thought I knew this stuff. Well, I had gotten used to seeing the way surgeon wrote it. And I realized that I didn't understand the concept. I had just memorized the answers, which is fine until you get it presented a different way. And then you're like, oh, wait, what are they asking? Because you didn't really understand the concept. You were just memorizing what you had been seeing for fifteen million hours for the last four months. So definitely switch it up every now and then. Even if you go to a different software, you know, there are a lot of free little softwares out there that you can just pull random questions just so you are testing yourself on the concept and not the way you see it in your study program. Now we also get a lot of questions on what's the best study program to use, whatever floats your boat. Because I've written for Roger and the AICPA releases questions to all of them. So no one is any better than the other. It's really just how it's explained. So I always say use a trial, like the free ten day, fifteen day trials of each one and see how you like it presented. Because some people, and I think is Becker, maybe Roger, the way it looks on the screen is more similar to the actual exam. Surgeon's screen doesn't look how the exam looks, but the information is the same in all the study programs. And some have a better test bank. Like I think Wiley and Glime, I think have the largest test bank. That's just a bunch of questions. But all of the questions are, the concepts are the same. And like I said, the AICPA releases questions to all of the programs and what the program, they just restructure and build off of what the AICPA has released to, to build up their test bank. So it's just having, you know, six thousand questions versus four thousand doesn't mean that you're gonna pass the exam any quicker than anyone else. It's just a whole lot of information. And you just gotta know, like if you want a big test bank and you're one that wants to keep running multiple choice questions, then get something with a larger test bank. If you like lectures that are more, you know, um, interesting, then use Roger because he's, he's interesting and lively with his lectures. If you are short attention span and you don't want lectures that are really long, you know, surgeon's lectures are only ten, fifteen minutes each. Um, but they are in depth. So it's really your learning style. So I never promote any one software over the other. I always say it's completely up to you and your learning style. So what we are gonna do, first I'll give everyone, you know, like five minutes or so, if you have questions, just unmute yourself. Um, and this is just general questions or anything. And then we're gonna run um, some questions and we're gonna do the, the topic switching. So I'm just gonna run it for every topic. Because at first I was gonna focus on what people may have needed, but I like the idea of switching because you don't know what you're gonna get. So if we do not.
Do you say that this is like for general questions?
General questions or yeah, anything you want.
I know that, yeah. Thank you, guys. This is really awesome. And I know Allah Abu has, I mean, shared some study tips. My struggle is I was CFO. Gosh, I have a crazy work schedule. I have three kids. You know, I'm a mommy. I'm a wife, just like you, you said at, at the beginning, Jazal, when you introduced yourself. And I have a challenging work life. I mean, like, you know, responsibilities and stuff. So what's typically, which advice for this person to study? And I get tired. Sometimes I beat myself and say, why I didn't do this before I get married. When I get married, the girls came. Then I start getting, climbing the ladder in my career. Then I start having challenging position that makes you look like ten o'clock and at night, eleven o'clock, you under audit or you working on Saturday sometime and Sunday sometimes, those type of things. So what would you advise to evenly, cuz it's okay to study, but I'm trying to do it. I have to have an efficient study method. It has to be efficient. You know, rather than just wasting time, you want to do something that you wanna retain something. So do you advise doing like three hours a day? One hour maybe early in the morning, if you can. And what, what are the tips you have out there or probably use the weekend as a touch of time? Like do five hours Saturday, five hours Sunday. I'm just trying to hear from you guys and also people in the group who are going through the same challenges and see if we can, if I can help myself.
So I'll tell you what I found effective and then I'll let Allah and then any of the other ladies, but I'm not a night person. So at nine o'clock, I'm tired. Like I can't think, I'm just ready to put the kids to bed. I'm ready to go to sleep. Like I can't. So I can't study at night. I had to get up in the mornings. So I would set my alarm for five AM. I mean, some people do four, that's way too early for me. But I would do five AM because that gave me about two hours, especially because I work from home. So I didn't have a commute. So I could get up at five AM, study for at least two hours before the kids and everyone starts getting up in the house, starts getting active. For me, that worked because my mind is fresh. I could make coffee. I could sit down in silence. The house is quiet. Everyone is still asleep. And do it that way. And, um, then, then weekends, I took advantage of weekends. I didn't really do much during the day because like you said, you just get busy, it gets hectic. And then when you're done and you cook and then you put the kids to bed, you're just ready to go to sleep. Some people can do nighttime. I couldn't do nighttime. So I would say reflect on when is your mind fresh? Are you a daytime person or are you a nighttime person? And don't try to do too many hours during the week because you'll beat yourself up. If you can't do it during the week, you can't do it during the week, but then take advantage of the weekend. So if you can only do two hours during weekdays, then just do those two hours, even if you gotta do one hour in the morning and one hour on lunch. Or one hour in the morning, one hour, you know, right before you go to bed or something, but try to get maybe the two hours in on weekdays and then make up the rest of your time. Cuz I do agree with Allah. I think twenty, twenty-four to twenty-eight, maybe even thirty hours of study time. So like I would pack a full day on weekends, like on weekends. And I don't, I don't think you should sit in one Saturday and do eight hours straight. But I think you should do about two hours, take a break, run the kids, go to the grocery store, come back to another two hours, you know, break it up, but get as many hours as you can in on weekends and at least two hours on weekdays. But other ladies, what are, what are some of your tips? What's, what works for you guys?
Yeah, what I will, I would like also to add, thanks for, for these tips. Great. Uh, yeah, so it's very important, as Judge Jan said, to determine yourself. So are you a night person or a morning person? Always try to use the time when the kids are sleeping to study. It's the best thing because it will be quiet. You will, you can concentrate, you can study. So as Judge Jan said, you can wake up earlier. So you can study two hours in the morning, early in the morning before the kids wake up. And this is the, like a great time to absorb as much, as much material as you can and move forward in the material. If you are a night person, you can put your kids early to sleep. So for example, eight, eight PM, eight thirty PM, you can, like they can sleep, put them to sleep. And then you can study also two hours at night, maybe two or even three hours at night if you are a person who, uh, like who can study at night. So, um, like try to find, to figure out or find like three, two to three hours a day to stick to these two or three hours to study. Also during the day, for example, it's very important to get support from your husband, from your, from your parents, from your family. You can, for example, send your kids, for example, to your mom, maybe an hour or two hours, study during these two hours. Your husband, for example, can take care of the kids for maybe, uh, sometime until you study. So it's very important, don't be lonely. Always try to, to take support from people around you. Let them understand your situation, that you need to pass the exam, let them support you. And try to use any time. And try to use any time that the kids are sleeping. Or they're enjoying their time with their father or or you can send them uh to your mother and study during these times. When when the the house is quiet. And during the day also, if they are maybe playing or they are away from you, you can also study during this time. So it's very important to try to find like from two to three hours a day to study, which I I think in my opinion, you can easily find those three hours. Early in the morning, you can study. Uh you can study in the night, put the kids to sleep early and then study the night if you uh prefer nights. And during the day, you can find an hour easily to study when in it. So it's very important to study um. To find like two to three hours a day. And during the weekends um. Uh you can uh, uh you can like study also um the same thing. Always use the early mornings or the night. To study and during the day as well. And uh it's very important also to spend the time with your family, like um. Try to give the kids uh everything they need. Uh I I know it's a big responsibility. Uh but also for you also, don't push yourself a lot. Don't um. Uh don't be, don't stress a lot about yourself. Like also you have time to relax. To have, enjoy your time with your kids, with your family. Reward yourself. It's okay. And when you feel that you are tired. First, don't like uh stress a lot. But most importantly, just keep on going. And um I'm sure you can do it, but it's very important to uh the support, to take support from your people around you. Let them help you. And you can figure out a time to study. I'm sure it will be, you will not face difficulty. Just uh put a commitment. And don't stress a lot, as I said. You have the chance to reward yourself, to enjoy yourself with your kids, with your husband. And at the same time, study. You can do it. Yeah.
And then I always say too, I had some people, you know, I was self-employed when I was studying. So I had. Somewhat of an advantage only because I could kind of make my schedule, but you know, clients are still demanding and it's still stuff you have to do. But um take them, take days off. Like we have vacation. That's what PTO was for. Like I had some people that like, you know, they know they're testing in a week, then they would take vacation days, you know, a few days before they test and use those days. To do your reviews and your practice exams and stuff. So don't be afraid to take time off from work unless you just don't have it available. But if you have it available, it's worth the sacrifice. It is definitely worth the sacrifice. I shared with the ladies last week um. Or the other day that my client list was, it was just too much and I knew I needed to study. So I literally sold off some of my clients. Like the smaller clients, I took um probably about a three thousand dollar a month cut. In clients and and sold that part of the business off because I knew I needed to study and I knew I couldn't keep supporting all these clients. And I knew it would be worth it in the end and it absolutely was. So whatever sacrifice you have to make, that you can make. Now, don't do anything that's gonna put you in a poorhouse. But whatever sacrifice you can make, then try, try to make it. Because that's what I had to do. I was like, look, I can't. This is these kids. Because I was doing myself a disservice by trying to service all these clients when I know my ultimate goal was just to become licensed. And then grow even more, which i- is exactly what I was able to do. So, you know, do whatever you can um as as best you can.
I'll chime in on that. Um I know for me, I I teach and then I also am running my own business. So I am stretched thin, but one thing that, the good thing is I'm work, I'm in my home the whole time. And I don't have kids at home. My kids are adults. Um and my husband worked nights, so I I have the advantage of no one here to disturb me besides a dog who constantly wants my attention. But I'm a night person, so I can be up until one o'clock and I'm good with that. But the client demand is still there. Um so one thing I am finding that works for me is to. Because I'm I'm using Ninja and then I just signed up for Darius as well. But I'll just have like, right now I have my iPad sitting over here in the corner. And I'll just have the videos playing. So if I'm doing something, I'm listening to those videos and I'll pause. I'm listening to something. I'm like, oh, okay, that's what that's meaning. So I'm listening to the videos and then when I'll set a certain time for myself to just completely shut down and say, okay, I'm done doing. Anything teaching related or business related. It's time for me to fully go into study mode. And then, you know, I'll go to the kitchen table or something, so I'm away from my office. And I'll actually go back and listen to the videos again, taking my notes or actually working on multiple choice questions or something. So even though I'm listening to the videos again, now I'm actually taking my notes. Or like today, I had to go to a client's office. So during my commute, I was listening to the videos. I have my iPad playing and I'm listening to those videos again. I'm like. I'm hearing it again, but I need to hear it again. If I'm just constantly hearing it again on that commute, it was a forty-five minute commute going there, so. Might as well just be listening to it. So it doesn't matter. And my husband says that on the days he doesn't have to work, we have to go somewhere. I'm like. I'm grabbing my iPad. I need to listen to videos. And he's like, okay, here we go. I'm like, hey. It's gonna be, this is what we're gonna be doing for right now CPA time. So. Just listening to the videos, it for me, it just feels like I, something might be sticking. I don't know right now, but we'll see if it's sticking.
And oh, that's great advice though, because I did the same thing. My girls are in gymnastics and I couldn't, you know, miss their meets because I'm just not, I have to be there. But I had my iPad as a gymnastics meet and while they're doing warmups, I'm running questions and answering multiple choice questions and in between breaks and. In the car and anywhere you can be. So like that's just the life and I always say it's temporary. Like this is not your life forever. So even though it's a huge sacrifice, it's a temporary sacrifice. And I used to feel so bad because I my kids, like mommy studying again, mommy studying again. Well, they are saying that now because I'm done and they're happy. So you just have to say, yeah, mommy studying. But you know what? Grab your laptop and study with me or something. And I had my four-year-old over here, well, she was eighteen months in. And then, you know, my other one and and we all study together. Come on, like just just if you have to get them involved in it to make them feel like, you know, they're studying and they're helping. Then whatever helps. You know, one of my friends, her husband, used to do the flash cards with her. Like he'd sit down and quiz her on flash card. So if you want to involve the family. To make them not feel excluded in the process, then do whatever, whatever helps to get the time in. Like whatever helps. Questions? All right, we might can get a few in before eight thirty because my husband would like to have dinner with me before he goes in on third shift. So we'll read some questions um. Alrighty, so I'm gonna say, I can't remember. This is the one I can just do everything. Yeah. So that's all checked. Now, what we're gonna do, ladies, is um we're gonna follow the multiple choice question tips. That Allah gave on how to, you know, look for the call of the question first. See if we can point out what's not needed. And again, we have not taken this test in years, so I don't expect to remember this stuff. But we can tell you how to look at the question, how to go about approaching it and and kind of see if we can get um. Get from there because this thing popped up and I don't even know what this is. I don't even know. This was tested when I was testing. So let's read the question. McClave Enterprises use quoted prices for similar assets. As the basis for determining the fair value of the investment. McClave's inputs for determining the fair values of the investments would be classified as which level in the fair value hierarchy? So again, the first thing you want to do is look at what are they're they're asking, what they're talking about. So we we're nowhere determining a level in the fair value hierarchy. I've never seen this question before in my life, so it has to be something that's new. So all I can tell you is this, you know that whatever study material or study software you're using, it has to do something with the fair value hierarchy. And I'm gonna, we'll go through. If anybody on the call though knows to answer this question and knows about fair value hierarchy, please unmute yourself and tell us what you want to choose. Because I have no idea. I've never seen this question before in my life.
I think it's level one.
Okay.
Um. I don't know. I I think Roger, he uh was explaining like level one is for similar. Level two is like observable type assets. Number three is like assumptions. But I'm not sure. I think.
That's good information because I.
I think.
We're gonna try it because the good thing is whenever you don't know, guess what? The software is gonna tell you the correct answer and give you an explanation. And I used to tell people. I would answer the questions just so I could read what the correct answer is and the incorrect answers and to understand it from there. And I don't know about other softwares because I use surgeon. It does a great job at that. So let me move us out the way. So it was level two. And what I like about surgeon is it'll tell you, you know, the reason why so level one inputs are based on quoted prices in active markets. For identical assets or liabilities. Oh, I do remember this. Okay. Level two inputs are those inputs other than quoted prices. Um, other than quoted prices that are observable and then level three inputs are unobservable. So something like this, if I were taking notes, I would just put level one, two, three in a quick note about each one of them. And then there's no such thing as a level four. So there you go. All right, let's hit the next one. Assuming constant inventory quantities, which of the following inventory costing methods would produce a lower inventory turnover ratio? In inflationary, in an inflationary economy? So you gotta first figure out, think about what's an inflationary economy. So you know, inflation, you know, prices are rising. So. What, when you're looking at uh LIFO, FIFO, moving average, all of that. And you can always eliminate two. And that's what I always tell you. And I learned that just working at Roger and dealing with the AICPA question. Is that two of them will always be completely wrong and normally should stand out. The other two will always be closely related. And then you have to kind of talk yourself through um which one and for what reason. So what are we going with, ladies?
This is Dawn. I'm gonna think, I'm gonna think, I think moving average. Even though I said Chloe, but I'm Dawn.
Input? And and why do you think it's moving average, Dawn?
And the reason why I say that is because I guess I kind of did a process of elimination. FIFO and LIFO. I don't think that has anything to hmm. Uh-oh. Will produce a lower inventory.
So what's the inventory turnover ratio?
I was just about to ask that. Would it help if we understood what the inventory ratio was, inventory turn, inventory turnover ratio was?
Yeah.
Now I'm leaning towards weighted average. I don't.
Divided by net average inventory?
Yeah, you gotta take cost of goods sold over the average inventory. And the average inventory is going to be beginning and ending involved. So your denominator, if you want to get lower, so that means your denominator is supposed to be higher than your denominator. Your ratio is lower whenever your. And if your denominator involves the average inventory, then we need to think about what type of this inventory gives us a highest denominator. Um. Weighted average LIFO. LIFO is last in first out.
Oh, yeah.
First in first out. I I think those two are out. LIFO and FIFO. Something's telling me they're out.
Are we going with weighted average? That's what Dawn said first.
Yeah, because you, yeah, you have to ensure that um moving average, you're moving. It's between weighted average and moving average. Like you said, it's good to eliminate two. And I do that too in multiple choice. I kill two. And I leave with two. It's between A and C.
Let's go with A. I'm thinking something completely different, but I'm gonna save my heart and then let's see. So we'll go with weighted average. Okay, I thought it was LIFO or FIFO and I'm gonna tell you why. Because inventory, the value changes. Is 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 when it's sitting in there. So if you're buying something that's first in, first out, but you have um, you know, the inflation. Because of inflation changes the value of whatever you're purchasing. So if you purchase it and it's the the inventory that's still sitting there, I'm trying to explain this so you guys understand that the inventory that's still sitting there. Is gonna be losing value. Because you're you're taking out what you're putting in. So first in, first out, but then you still have inventory sitting there. The reason I didn't think it was either of the two of these is because they. Inflation wouldn't have a whole lot to do with a moving average and a weighted average. Because it's an average. So like the first in, first out or LIFO, last in, first out. Definitely has to do with um the monetary value of the inventory. Because when you do last in, first out. You're selling what you've just purchased. So then you have old inventory just sitting in there. When you do first in, first out. You're selling it based on um you purchase it and then you sell that first. So is is if I'm explaining that right, I'm sorry if it's confusing. But I would say if you looked at this, you know it has to do with inflation. And you know that means prices or something is changing. So what of the two would have anything to do with prices changing? Well, an average of something wouldn't have anything to do with price movement. Did that make sense? Did I completely confuse you? All right. Okay, good. Oh, and that look, I guess I could have just read the thing over here. In inflationary period, rising prices will call LIFO. Cost of goods sold to be highest from the recent purchases and LIFO in the inventory to be lowest from the earliest purchases. So let's hit another one. Let's see if we can at least get a full five in.
So what was the correct answer, LIFO or FIFO?
It was FIFO. Can I go back? I think, I can't, I don't think I can go back. It was FIFO though. Yeah, it was FIFO. Okay, so now in questions like this, when they're not short, so and this is my approach, Allah, you can definitely chime in. When they start, if it's more than two sentences, I go to the last sentence first. And then I read. Because if it's short, then it's short. But if it's like this, I go to the last sentence first. Which I believe is kind of what she referred to as as the call of the question. So we know that the resulting gain should be included in Fox financial statement. And so we know we're talking about some type of gain. And then I go to the top and read the question through. So Allah, I'll let you kind of break this one down. For him and um see if we can come to a an answer.
Yeah, sure. Um Fox company, a US company contracted to purchase foreign goods. Payments in foreign currency was due one month after the goods were received at Fox warehouse. Between the receipt of goods and the time of payment, the exchange rates changed in Fox favor. The resulting gain should be included in Fox financial statements as a component of other comprehensive income. A component of income from continuing operations. A separate component of stockholders' equity at deferred credit. So I think here the elimination is important. So we can eliminate two answers that are obviously incorrect, right? Uh which are, which are, I think, C and D, like they seem incorrect. Now here we're gonna start thinking about the, the question here says that there were some changes, changes in the foreign currency. And um we're here, we should know where to report it as an income statement, as apart from the income from continuing operations or. Other comprehensive income. So I think, I don't know you guys, does anyone have idea here about the, before I like I I say anything, anyone uh wants to um. Ex- wants to to to, has any um, anything wants to share anything about this?
Is it A? Is it number one? Comprehensive income? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing.
I think it's um. I think it's gonna be a part of the, like a component of the income from continuing operations. That's my thought because it's a normal change in the exchange of prices. It's not a translation. If it was a translation, a foreign currency translation, it will be a comprehensive income. But here.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, but that's what I, that's what's important to know, the difference. And and you gotta know, so the com- comprehensive income is reported on what? And then the continuing, the component of income from continued operations is reported on what? So you have to know, make sure you know which one is on the income statement, which one is on the balance sheet.
Yeah.
So this is the tricky part. Um yeah, if it was a translation. We will know definitely it's going to comprehensive income. And. How would you know if it was a translation? It's like when you exchange for another currency right away, right?
Yeah, if they told you, for example, that um. They're maybe doing a year-end uh translation for the financial statements. They want to translate them to something using year-end rates or something. That's uh. That goes to the other comprehensive income.
Yeah, then B, B seems to be the right answer.
Yeah, I hope it's correct. It'll be correct.
Go with B?
Yeah.
Okay. Good job. Yep.
Yeah.
And then one thing I like about um surgeon too is if you ever want to. And then one thing I like about um Surgeon too is if you ever wanted to know like the terms and some of the stuff you were just asking to. You can click on it and it tells you, you know, like a foreign currency is a currency other than a functional currency. Um, then it also, you can click on like functional currency. And give the definition of that, because you know, a lot of times we'll read it and and even though they might tell you, okay, you got it right, or you got it wrong, you still don't know. What that stuff means. So I used to still go through and read, you know, some of the terms, so I can make sure, because you'll always see it in another question. So you may read the information that they give you and then you go to the next question and bam, something you just read helped you answer the next question. Um, and then same thing with the reference. So their reference takes you to, you know, same thing about the foreign currency transactions. May produce receivables or payables, and it goes through the functional currency and then increases or decreases expected and all of the exchange rates. And so all of the reference information, I don't think you should easily skip by, even if you get it right. Because even when I got questions right, unless it was something simple that I just knew, um but even if it was more difficult and I. Pretty much either figured it out and I got it right, I would still read the correct, you know. Any, any, anything else that'll assist, um because even though you got this one right, the information you read can assist you in getting the next one right. Alright, let's see what we got. So present value. What is the present value of all future retirement payments attributed by the Stedagum pensions? Attributed by the pension benefit formula to employee services rendered prior to the date. And based on current and past compensation levels. And ladies, read that for yourself, because that was a mouthful in one sentence. And it always is two that completely stand out that cannot be correct. So let's eliminate those two first. So which two we want to get rid of? And they they stand out clearly.
Interest call and service call?
Nice too.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm thinking the second one projected because it's saying future.
Okay. That's a good analysis.
Me too. I think it's projected.
Alright, let's see. What?
Oh my god.
If this is a difficult question, because.
It says future retirement.
Yeah, that's why.
And also it says. Employees service rendered prior.
Yeah, so when you say it's prior and you say future, so you know that.
Yeah, accumulated benefit obligation is based upon prior compensation. And project benefit obligation is based on future compensation. So if I were taking notes on this one, I would write these two sentences in my notes, because it is. Clearly tells you the difference between the two. And this is a difficult question, because Surgeon tells you like the first time scored. Only twenty-eight percent of people got that right the first time. So that shows you the difficulty level. So write that in your notes. Accumulated equals this. Project benefit equals this. And that's it. Alright, let's hit one more before we gotta get off. Okay, let's see what they're talking about. I'll let you take this one, Allah.
Okay. Smith Company invested, okay, so let's read the the call of the question first. What was the intrinsic value of that call option at the time of initial investment? So here is asking about the intrinsic uh value of the call. Of the option, of the call option at the time of initial investment. Okay, so the question says here, Smith Company invested two hundred dollars in a call option for one hundred shares of Jing Company. Point five dollars per common stock. With the market price was ten dollars per share. The option expired in three months and had an exercise price of nine dollars per share. What was the intrinsic value of the call option at the time of the initial investment? So here is talking about the call options and um the intrinsic value of the call options. Actually, it says that the company invested two hundred dollars in a call option for one hundred shares. And um Jing Company had like fifty cents the the par common stock. When the market price was ten pair share. So um the option expired in three months and had an exercise price of nine dollars per share. What was the intrinsic value of the call option at the time of the initial investment? So here, I think we should see see the changes or the differences in some, and like first of all, two hundred uh um dollars. For one hundred shares, so like he invested like twenty dollars per share. I mean, I mean, two dollars per share he invested. He paid like two dollars per share. And um the par common stock, it's it's it was fifty cents only. But the market price was ten dollars per share. The uh the option expired in three months and had an exercise price of nine pair share. What was the intrinsic value? At the time of initial investment. So um, any, anyone has any idea about this question, guys?
What do they mean by intrinsic value? Do they mean the original value of the call?
I'm almost done with the last one. One, one of the things that um I kind of stands out, and I could be wrong, guys, it's been a while. But sometimes when you have questions like this, they'll insert numbers that have nothing to do with the calculations.
To throw you off.
Yeah, and you have to be careful about that. Now, I'm not sure, but I'm even wondering if this portion, the option expired in three months. And had an exercise price of nine dollars per share. I don't even know if that's involved in the calculation. Or that's something that they just threw in.
Distractor.
That's what I was wondering, is that even involved? Do. Are we supposed to go with ten dot the market price, or are we supposed to go with uh fifty cents per? Price.
And then something like this too, what I do is that when I'm not sure of intrinsic value, we're gonna go over here to Google.
That's true.
Because I don't even remember.
No, I mean, that's the right thing to do.
Okay, so intrinsic value is just a measure of what an asset is worth.
What's his value?
Yep, what's his value? So that's why I say they they throw these words in here and it's like, oh god, what's intrinsic value?
Even if it's original, so market value may be like the fair value, so that can take you back to the question.
Yep. By adding the current per share book value with the discounted residual income. Okay, so let's go back to the question.
So the market value was ten dollars per share. Two dollars per share.
And that's. And then it was fifty cent. Alright, this is what we're gonna do. Anybody got a a guess, any type of calculation that you've done, where you think you know the answer is, before we see what it is? And and read how to calculate this thing?
Go receive.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I was gonna say a hundred.
Yeah, go receive.
When in doubt? There we go. So let's see how they calculated, though, the intrinsic.
Okay, here you go.
Yeah, okay, so this wasn't necessary.
One thousand, one hundred times ten, yeah.
That is not what I did in my mind. I said two dollars at a hundred share, that's two hundred versus ten dollars at a hundred share. So they bought it, they they bought it less than what the value set it was worth, and the difference between the state of value and the market value was a hundred. Which don't listen to what I did, because that may be wrong somewhere.
But it works.
And then I would write this in my notes as a formula, like I would put intrinsic method equals market price minus. And that way, the next time it comes up, you you already know it.
Yeah. So we're gonna get a copy of this recording, right?
Yes, yes. I recorded it, you'll get a copy of it. I want to put a a quick poll question out before we end for tonight, though. Because I had someone ask today, do we do them during the daytime? And you know, I was a working, working and kids and all that, so I never did anything during the day. But is everyone scheduled better during the day, or is evenings better? I always assumed evenings were better.
Evening is good for me.
Evening's fine for me. I mean, during the day, I I my head is all over the place at work, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, because I had someone ask, and I'm thinking, I I was never able to like study and do stuff in the middle of the day. It was either early morning, like you know, maybe one Saturday, we'll have like an early morning study session. And and then if if we do those, it would be exactly what we're doing now. Like, we wouldn't do the overview and all at the beginning. It would strictly be, okay, ladies, let's hit it eight AM on Saturday and run, you know, twenty question or something. Because I I do find value, and you guys can chime in, value in doing it um collectively or collaboratively. Because you get other people's points of view and you can see how to work the questions, and then it's like, oh, okay. Versus you sitting at home trying to figure it out on your own and it's just not making sense.
How often do you do these court classes, or these uh webinars?
We just started this month and they they're kind of taking off. So like right now, we're offering them on Mondays and Thursdays. Um, you know, from seven to eight thirty. Um, it's the standard time and I might, you know, maybe I'll start it every other Saturday morning one. Just because sometimes it's the evenings for some people might be cooking dinner, and I know we have people on the West Coast. That, you know, um haven't been able to tune in, or it's too late for some people because they're getting kids ready. So, you know, maybe we'll start like every other Saturday, or if I can find someone to rotate with me, so that I don't have to do every Saturday. Well, but you know, I actually don't mind. I don't do anything. That's house cleaning day, so you know, the kids can clean up and house leaks. So yeah, like if you find value in it and like any suggestions, anytime if you say, you know, Joanne, I love this, but can we do more of this? Please email, like email admin at theladycpa network dot com, because I hadn't thought of this. Like, we did a session last Monday, I think it was, and one of the young ladies said, well, do you run live questions? I hadn't thought about that. And so then I was like, no, we don't. And then I I figured out in my head, how can I do it with real questions? Because I didn't know that my software login was still work. So just just this past Monday, I'm like, let me log in to Surgeon, and it worked. I'm like, oh shoot, okay, yeah, we can run questions live. So you know, just sometimes you don't know what the ladies need until you guys kind of put it out there. So anytime you have suggestions, comments, always email us. Um, if you think Saturday morning, a a quick Saturday morning, you know, come, everybody come together for an hour. Hour and a half on a Saturday morning and run through some questions, then we'll skip the fluff and just get straight into the questions. And we'll run them together. Again, I don't always know the answer, but I definitely know, once I see the answer, how to explain it and how they got to it. Just because you know, after you see it, it's like, oh, okay, I get it. It's this, it's that and the other. So definitely, you know, let me know, whatever works for you guys. If if we get enough people that say, hey, let's do a Saturday morning one, then I'm on it. I'm not doing anything. I'm studying for the CFP exam, so you know, you never stop studying. I'm doing the certified fraud examiner. Uh, e- exam in December, I'm gonna take it. So I'm I'm studying anyway. So you never stop learning, never stop getting certifications, let me tell you. It only helps, just add add the dollar signs, just keep going.
Yeah.
Um, I believe that is all, ladies, for this evening. Um, if you need the recording, let me know. I'll send you the link. It's gonna download to my computer. I'll save it in Dropbox and I'll send out the link to everybody. I may just go ahead and send it anyway, because I have everyone's email listed. So matter of fact, yeah, don't even email me. Everyone's getting a copy. Of the Dropbox link for tonight.
Yeah.
And you don't even have to request it, because I can export the the registration list with everybody's email address and and I'll send everybody the recording out. Allah, you have been wonderful. When I tell you, you have given more information in your overview than we've had since we started this session. Like stuff I just hadn't even thought about. So you are always welcome to tune in any Monday or Thursday or whenever you want. So just shoot me a message, say, hey, I want to be on tonight, send me the code. I will send you.
I just want to share, yeah, yeah, if like, since we get to know each other through the sessions. Is it okay if a couple of people, for example, are in the same time zone, decide to study together?
Yes, absolutely.
Outside of this, I mean, I'm more than welcome to, because I think it helps keep accountability. Yeah, if anybody wants to join, we can join this on Monday and Thursday. But also, if you want to do sessions on other days alone, I'd be more than happy to work with people. To Google Meet. You know, we can, we have different study materials, we can study together and we can supplement by this on Monday and Thursday. That give you a whole study cycle to keep you going, because sometimes I get lazy if I don't have the motivation, I'm going to be honest. So.
I I need all that.
Interested. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to kick a study group for people who want to stay on a steady schedule. Like Allah said, you have to study every day.
Yeah.
I like it.
And because you guys have registered for this one, my um database says everyone email address. So look out, like I might Friday after I finish work tomorrow, I say, you know what, I ain't doing nothing Saturday morning, because I'm not actually doing anything this weekend with the kids, no gymnastics or anything. So be on the lookout, like on between my social media and the emails that come from the Lady CP, it might say, hey, we got a Saturday session in the morning, you want to join? Here's the link. And if we do that, it's just straight questions. It's just, we're gonna pull it up and we're just gonna run, run questions.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yep, but if anybody's interested in the study group, I'm available.
I'm interested. How do we share our contact information?
Maybe we can go to judge one.
Yeah, let me know. Okay, so do me, because I don't want to, you know, give out someone's email addresses. They don't want everyone to have it. So send admin at the lady CPA and say, I'm interested in collaborating. And everyone who sends me that email. I'll send an email with everybody on it, so that you'll have everybody else's email address.
Okay, admin at theladycpa dot com?
Great, that sounds good.
Make sure it's network on there, so theladycpa network dot com.
Admin at the lady.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so send that and I'll just send an email out to everybody, so you guys will have each other's um email addresses.
This was great. Thank you so much, ladies.
It was great. Yeah, it gives a lot of motivation. I really learned a lot this afternoon.
Yeah. That lightens my heart, I'm telling you guys, because that's that's all I want. Like, sometimes I don't know if it's helpful, you know, it is good, is it something I need to change? So all the feedback in the world is is welcome, because I'm doing it for you guys. I want it to be convenient for you. So whatever works for you is is fine, I mean. I love your wall back there, Natasha.
The three letters.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I saw that. She she believed, you know, I I love all, I'm all about women's empowerment and and pushing forward and yes, so.
I have to, I have to motivate myself, so I look over and I'd be like, yeah, I can do it.
I can do it. Because when we hang up this call, I'm gonna put an hour in of studying for the CFP exam.
Good, good.
Yeah, me too. Alright, good night.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me. And thank you all, guys.
Thank you. Bye bye.